That we likely are going to end this meeting a bit early at 10:30. A number of commissioners have conflicts and we want to make sure that we're able to get to vote. So that we know with clarity what the CPC's position is on any of the recommendations. So hopefully, we can move our conversation along accordingly. But I, from the memo, I do want to say, I think it's helpful to give a little bit of background. And so a memo that was circulated to commissioners and out to the public indicates that contract negotiations with the Seattle Police Officers Guild have been delayed and the city has not adopted its bargaining parameters. This gives the CPC an opportunity to build off the community engagement work it has done on negotiations, including two 2019 public hearings conducted in partnership with the Seattle City Council. In 2019 CPC hosted two public hearings and received significant amount of feedback and forward recommendations to the city that led to a resolution. Recently, in early February, the CPC hosted two community conversations. During these meetings, the CPC presented background information on the history of the current police contracts and the CPC's work to address the flawed accountability provisions. The City Resources Department also presented information on how the contracts are negotiated and legal restrictions placed on the city. During the CPC's regularly scheduled February 17th meeting, around 10 community members, some of whom were at earlier meetings, gave public comment. And based on community conversations, the CPC has identified sort of three areas city leaders need to address during the contract negotiations. Fully implementing reforms in the 2017 Accountability Ordinance, ensuring the contracts promote accountability and do not undermine accountability provisions already in place and enabling the city to move forward with community alternatives. So I will turn the conversation over to Shailene, who has distilled community comments that we've received from the two meetings and put them into recommendation format for us to discuss and ultimately vote on to determine whether or not the CPC will approve those recommendations. Shailene?
Perfect. Thank you, LaRan. Good morning, everyone. And just as a side note, I am in a coffee shop, so if you hear noise of espresso, I'm living my best life with coffee. So I'm on a little bit of a self-care week, so let me share my screen and let's get started. Alrighty, here we go. Can I get a thumbs up from co-chairs if you can see this? Because I can see your little funny else. Okay, thank you. Perfect. Let's get started. So as LaRan was saying, we had the town hall and then we still had our letter that was sent out in 2019 with recommendations. So what I'm going to do is kind of walk through those. We have nine or 10 in total. And so at any time, feel free to ask questions. You will not mess up my flow. So feel free to hold them to the end or however you'd like to do that. That's completely fine. Because some of these are a little bit heavier and might require a little bit more discussion and conversation because of the content. So let's get started with number one. So the first recommendation we have here is to fully implement the reforms in the accountability law. This was discussed, of course, in the 2017 Accountability Ordinance, also within the letter that was sent out in 2019. And so what you have here and the background in the comments is what these reforms would include, among other things. And if you think about that accountability law, there was hundreds, many, many reforms that were suggested. So we wanted to pull out a few that were also mentioned, that 2019 letter that was sent to council. And that's to create strong policies in areas such as secondary employment to empower civilian investigations. That's specific to like civilianizing OPA, right? We also have closing the loopholes of police officers to avoid discipline at 180-day timeline. That has been discussed at length, so that's another piece here. One is to fix Seattle's broken disciplinary appeal system by addressing the arbitration system. And this is something we also identified within our areas for state legislative agenda, but it's also mentioned within the accountability ordinance. So these are the few major ones that we pulled because they also came up in the town hall or other conversations from you all as commissioners. So this is recommendation one. Any questions or first thoughts here? I can move on to the next one, but if not, we can always take a little break. Not a break, no breaks, but can we want to question, see our comments or suggestions? Okay, I'll move on to recommendation number two. Number two is the Labor Relations Policy Committee must make public the city's bargaining priorities. This was a prior CPC recommendation, but it also came up within the town hall that we had with the community. So members of the community, essentially, it says here, they were curious about the parameters and how that process plays out and they'd like to see it play out publicly because it seems to be kind of a black box to everyone and they want to be part of that process. So our suggestion here is to make that public. Any thoughts or questions here?
I have a quick question. Are we saying that they should make this public prior to the start of bargaining? Or is there a timeframe at some point? So do we want to clarify timeframe?
We didn't put that in here. I think that's up for discussion. Absolutely. If we all want to make that a little more concrete as far as timeline, if you want it to be before, after, during. The feedback we receive from people is that they want to know, like, what parameters are set, how they're set, can that be public? Someone asked, can they weigh in on it? So it came a variety of responses. So I think that's a really good point here, Erin, too, if we want to discuss that and kind of make a decision or leave it as it is, so they can decide or how they want to do it, or if you want to be specific.
I'm comfortable either way. I just wanted to get a sense from other commissioners.
I like the idea of leaving it general and, you know, with the idea that we're pushing for maximum transparency. And Jesse, I can't tell if anyone else has their hands up because I can only see a few people. So if a commissioner wants to weigh in, please just unmute yourself and if you raise your hand, Jesse, let us know.
Yes, Esther has her hand raised.
Okay, Esther.
Hi, I just wanted to weigh in here. Yeah, I feel like I want to err more on the side of transparency. I think that's been one of the points of frustration for community generally with the CPC is that they want more transparency in decision-making and process. So I like the idea of keeping it more general and really responding to community needs.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Shailene, I think we can move on.
Perfect. And thank you for everyone. So recommendation three. The city should publicly identify who is at the negotiating table for the collective bargaining agreements, who those parties represent and their role in the negotiating process. So this came up during the town hall and I have the asterisks here to the side that to denote that even though the city does publicly post this information, we had multiple comments about people saying that they didn't know who was at the table. They didn't know who representing and their role in the process. And in my particular breakout session, I'll share, we had two people that expressed that opinion. One of the people in the breakout rooms was able to quickly gather that information and send them a link so they could. But what we're still hearing is that it's not as accessible as it could be. And so while we recognize it's there, they could do a better job because we heard it quite a bit. And we just want the city to be as transparent as possible. So we put this in here. I can take it out because they already do this, but wanted to make sure we were capturing community voice from the other night.
Esther, go ahead, unless your hand is still raised from before. I can't tell.
No, no, I raised it again. Yeah, I think that this is something, it's like a city error when it involves community engagement, is they believe that the community engagement is come to me. You know, here's the information, you just have to seek it out on a website or something like that. And I think that I would like us to really encourage more proactive community engagement, where we actually take information to community. So, and this is happening in a variety of different forums, this conversation. And so if we can actually be leaders in advancing these efforts, I would be happy.
That makes sense. Would you want to? I think that'd be a good recommendation of like the CPC, where it comes to this, what we're sending to the city. Would you want within the background column, so the column to the right? Okay, I'm holding up both of my fingers because the left and right. Do you want us to add more there or is the recommendation about just being proactive with the information? I know that's for us too, but do you want us to add this for the city as well?
Definitely, definitely.
So let me, I also want to tell everyone what's going on in the background. So I am going to do like little comments here, just so I can keep everything moving. But also know that the team behind the scenes, shout out to Nina and Luisa, are also doing one more substantive edits on the backend. But just where you're going to capture, you're going to see my comments here to make sure that we're doing that in case we run out of time to review the final product or close to the final product. Thank you.
And I think Suzette may have her hand up. Suzette, do you have a comment or want to provide input?
I do, and it's in regards to collective bargaining and some of the processes that happen within collective bargaining. So sometimes they don't know, like when we are doing collective bargaining, sometimes we don't know who's sitting on which side until the day that we start bargaining. Because those things can change and it'll depend on like what, like which group is bargaining and then and then who, because each side gets to pick who they want. So on the city side, they get to pick who they want. On the Spog side, they get to pick who they want. Neither side can dictate to the other who's on the bargaining team. So that sometimes becomes, sometimes we just don't know. And sometimes it's a vote of the membership when you're talking about a union. And so it depends on when that information is available. I just wanted to give context into bargaining.
Great, thank you for that. We appreciate it. So it sounds like our request is for fluid information, some that may be, you know, more stable. I'm sure that there are certain members that are stable throughout and some members who might change over time. And so sort of asking for a dynamic, consistently engaged communication and distribution of information on this, in this particular area. Is that right? Sound good?
Yeah, I didn't know if there's any changes that can be made. I could identify in three, just to make clear that if there's evolution. You did language. Okay. I think we have some language on the final document that talks to the fluidity of that and capturing it.
Okay. Anyone else have a comment?
Just that if these things are fluid, it might go well with the next recommendation, which is about regularly releasing updates, so it could be fluidly updated.
Okay, well, Shailene, that gets us to the next one.
Sounds good. Okay, so for number four, we have the city should announce and release regular updates on the process of the negotiations. This also came from the town hall. And just general, more transparency, that the community was saying they are interested in seeing more transparency in the bargaining process. And so having regular updates, as much as what they're allowed to give within those parameters and within confidentiality, just people want to know what's going on as the process is playing out. So this is why this is kind of left vague in the sense of like, let them figure out legally what they're allowed to do and then make that possible for the community.
Great. Does anyone have a comment on this one? Suzette, I can't tell if you have a new comment or if this is an old hand raise of yours. Seems like we have no discussion on that one. Go ahead.
Okay. Number five, the city must commit to releasing all information that can be made public on the negotiation process at the conclusion of the process, but prior to city council approval. This again came from the bargaining town hall. Community expressed concerns about what's going in the contracts without, once it's finalized and not really know what's going into the contracts prior to that finalization. And they want information on the negotiating process to be opened up, at least at the conclusion of the negotiations, if it can't be done throughout the process. So five is a little different from four. Four is like, give us updates. Five is tell us everything before city council approval. Any questions on this one or suggestions?
That seems pretty straightforward to me and a reasonable asset community has made consistently. I don't need any clarification on that. Does anyone else? Reverend Walden, are you speaking?
I was going to say something about this. I'm just trying to say, I wanted to understand if you want the, you want the, the community wants the information before the city council votes on it, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, because, because the city council votes to ratify it, I mean, to agree on it for these. So are they looking, the community want to have some input at that time? I mean, to send things back to say that, I'm confused about that one. So if I could just get a little talk me through that one, it would be lovely.
Sure. My understanding from those community conversations is that the reason there was a conversation about having it prior to the city council approval was that's the one, everyone is on the same page on what's going in. And in that era, there are some final thoughts that community is able to give at that time, that they can be done at that time, which is a potential opportunity for the city or for a body like the CPC to kind of host those conversations. So this one, again, a little more conversation if you'd like to have the nuts and bolts of it, but the essence is here of what they're asking for, if that makes sense, Reverend Walden.
It might make sense, but if bargaining is over, I mean, and the city and the, and the union is coming to some kind of agreement and waiting for the city.
We lost your audio, Reverend Walden. I think my understanding from what Shailene is saying is that for the community to be able to give properly informed public comment to city council when they are making their decision whether to approve the contract or not, they need to have a full understanding of what went on. So that they can, they can give appropriate public comment.
That's exactly it. Thank you so much, Erin.
And just, I think possibly a part of Reverend Walden's question is about, so the LRPC, which is a majority of the city council, votes on the contracts prior to them going to the full city council. So I guess would this be, would this information be made public before the LRPC vote or before the council votes?
I think we could add that here, if you wanted to, prior to city council, prior to LRPC vote and city council approval. You could add that kind of language with that, Erin?
I think we say at the conclusion of the process. So, you know, LRPC is a smaller portion of city council. You know, it's at the conclusion of the process, this needs to be shared. So I think we actually covered that unless somebody is concerned.
I think that makes sense to me. I think the prior to city council approval is also inclusive enough to include a smaller portion of city council and is not just the whole council, so. Reverend Walden, you were speaking before and I just want to make sure that you're, we have all of your comments. You're muted, so I don't know if we got all your comments on that one.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Okay, anyone else have a comment on that one? All right, Shailene.
Alrighty, let's go on to number six. Number six, the city should publicly state, explain and justify to the community what it gave up in negotiation process. This also came up during our town hall. And the, I mean, our community is very smart. They recognize that the city can, you know, give up aspects during the bargaining process they have in the past, things that people have wanted. And so since the city can refuse to give up aspects, the contracts that are important, what sorts of things are not being thought for? So this is just more transparency of the city just being very, in plain English, here's what we decided to give up, here's what we're not fighting for, here's what we think is not important to be, just the plain, simple language of it. So that's what we're asking for here. Any thoughts on that or suggestions?
Looks like Suzette has a comment.
So when you're saying what they gave up, are you talking about from the initial point of the parameter, making of the parameters to what the conclusion of the bargaining is? Or, I mean, because proposals change throughout the whole process, so, and new things can be introduced.
Yeah, apologies for, I didn't mean to cut you off. Yes, we are, that is the conversation, which is why some of these are kind of broadly stated. That way, if it's like, what did we give them in the process, throughout the entire negotiation process, what was given up? And which could be released during those regular updates that they're asking for. An update could state that this is what's happened. And this can also be said again at the conclusion of a process on the information, number five. You know, releasing all information about the negotiation process as well. So there are several points within other recommendations here where they can state that information. But we just want to make it clear like, hey, also make sure you're telling them this. Not just what was negotiated, but what was left out on purpose.
Douglas?
Thanks. Yeah, I'm just wondering, maybe there is a way to make it clearer. I'm okay with if we leave it the way it is, but kind of along the same lines as what Suzette was, was asking. I mean, I wonder if it would be clear to say something like, you know, what like changes were made from the original proposal or, you know, you know, we could say like what was given up compared to the original. And I don't know what the right collective bargaining language is, but like, what was given up compared to the original proposal? And yeah, maybe like changes again would be a more helpful word because I'd also be interested if we, if something was gained. You know, like I think it would be helpful for the community to know not just what was given up, but if anything was also gained.
Okay, thanks, Douglas. I'm making a note here and I'm also talking to my team on the backend. So thank you.
Does anyone else have a comment or wish to ask a question about this proposal?
Alrighty, if it's okay, LaRan, I'll move on to number seven. All right. Number seven, remove clauses from the contracts that allow the collective bargaining agreements to take precedence over local law. This has come up within, excuse me, I'm sorry, this came up within the town hall. And so also we note here that Article 18.2 in the Spog contract, it definitely says the contracts will supersede city ordinances if they're in conflict with the contract. So we are thinking that this clause should be removed as it is a barrier to accountability. And this was talked, I think this was discussed in almost every breakout session that was had and then in the larger group on the town hall. So this is your recommendation, number seven. Any thoughts, questions or potential revisions, additions here?
Douglas, is your hand still up or is this?
It's not, my bad.
Reverend Walden, go ahead.
Yeah, well, you know, I, we found this piece, what you're talking about, it was in the appendix of the, of the last negotiation. And so it was hidden in the appendix that the, that, that the bargaining would supersede. You know, on some of the levels, we went back to 2005 because of that, what was in the appendix. So I'm trying to figure out, does this fix that what was in the appendix? So could you just go through that one more time for me? I mean, sometimes I have to hear it twice to be able to make it stick.
Sure. And please forgive me if I'm not aware of the appendix 2005, but this is just to, it would, it sounds like it would fix that particular language, that they would no longer be allowed, the contracts would not be able to override or supersede city law. And so it would remove that capability.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Reverend Walden, is that, I hope I have a question.
Well, I mean, it was really convoluted and if you wasn't there or you didn't see it, I mean, at the end of the day, I, I, things got rolled back in such a way. And for people, other people around to understand that we didn't put anything on the table for 2007, the last bargaining, because the table was already set. And so when, when, when the contract came out, it rolled back a lot of powers that we had put in that we hoped to have, because it never got on the table. And then that's why it went back to 2005. And so I'm just trying to see how this fixed this. That's all, that's all I'm trying to see. That's all. So if you could explain it one more time, you're really good at this. I mean, you should be in the movie star. You should be a movie star. You're good at explaining it. So, yeah, so if you could do that one more time for me, since I'm stickler here, trying to figure it out in my head, what happened way back in 2014. So thank you.
Sure. So I'll just say one more time, number seven, based on the current Spog contract, states that if there is a conflict between the contract and city law or city ordinances, that the contract would win. It would supersede city law. So we are asking to remove any clauses from the contracts that would allow the contract to override local law. And that's what, essentially what number seven is stating. This was a large request during our town hall with the community.
I got it. Excellent. I'm on board.
Any other questions or comments on this one?
I think Erin's got one.
Yeah, I just had a very quick clarifying question. There, is there anything, and maybe this is more for Suzette, is there anything in state law that addresses this that would need to be a change to be able to do this? Or is this simply in the contract and if they change it, then it can move forward?
This is, it's in the contract. And so sometimes contracts will have provisions that say that their clause will actually go against like a local ordinance. And it's, it's difference, it's the difference between an ordinance and then the actual law and then state law. So if state law is ruling, then the contract will not prevail over the state law. But if it, or state law or federal law, if it is a local ordinance or anything like that, then it can rule over that ordinance.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions?
LaRan, I'm wondering if number seven, where it says precedence over local law, should it, as an attorney, do you think we should say more like ordinances or law? I mean, the people law kind of covers it, but should we be more specific here?
I mean, I think local laws works. I also think that I had a concern for a moment that the background is specifically just about one article, but the recommendation is about removing all clauses. And I think that also gets to what Reverend Walden's concern was, that there may be other places in the contract outside of just that one article that's referenced in the background, but the actual recommendation is general. So I think that covers. And I also think over local law, if you want to be more specific and also include accountability ordinance. You know, I would not exchange it for local law, but you could add the accountability ordinance if you would like. But I do think local law is fine.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, I think we're ready to move on to H.
Alright, we only have two left, y'all. Number eight, so So this is a really fun game of you get to pick which one of these, or we can scrap them both and completely craft something different. So number eight is either we can say remove limits on civilianization of the Office of Accountability or fully civilianize the Office of Police Accountability. This came from our bargaining town hall, also came from previous recommendations the CPC has made. So I want to talk about why there are two here. So currently within the contracts, the way they're interpreted, OPA can only have two civilian positions. So the difference is here, bless you, the difference is here, I was blessing myself. Um, the difference is here between these two recommendation, the languages for recommendation is we can either fully act to fully civilianize office police accountability that would get rid of the officers that are currently in place that do these investigations or remove the limits within the contracts that OPA can only have two. So they could potentially keep the officers that are civil, that are completing these investigations, but just have more civilian investigators outside of just two, they could have more than that. So this is a big, for me, this is a much larger conversation for you all to have in terms of what kind of OPA body would you want, would you want the city to have? It sounds like from the town hall, people are asking for a fully civilianized staff at OPA, but there's also this offer here to just remove the limits on how many civilians they can have. So totally up for discussion and debate and then kind of decide which one, which route you'd like to take, or maybe someone has a different idea through a different lens or perspective that you think would get us closer to either one.
Um, Esther?
Thank you. I'm in favor of number two.
Sorry, Reverend Walden, can you mute yourself? There's a lot of feedback, I think.
Okay. Um, so option number two is making a fully civilianize the Office of Police Accountability is the model that they use in Rochester, New York. Um, there's actually true authority and oversight and it's all civilian. Um, and that would be my preference.
Thank you for bringing that up, Esther. And I wanted to also shout out that this model of fully civilianized um, office is also done in Chicago and that was done about three years ago. They did a switch. So also in another major city.
Great, thank you. Uh, Erin?
I just wanted to um, to clarify, uh, and we might want to be specific here that we are specifically relating, we say it in the comments that related to investigators because OPA currently has civilian directors, civilian supervisors, and it's only at the investigator level. So I think it's important that we at least in either of these that we acknowledge that we're talking about the investigator portion.
That's a really good point. Thank you for that, Erin. And also, I mean, it is in the comments, but one of the justifications as well is that the civilian investigators do not have full authority to go if the complaint could result in termination, that is not an investigation that they can actually participate in. So if it's fully civilianized, they would obviously have to change that language if it's, you know, so there's potential to change that language as well, but just wanted to throw that out there. Just that there's some nuance here.
Go ahead, Reverend Walden.
I just wanted to have a comment. I got the, the reason why thank you, the reason why it's there that way is because I, I, the previous auditor thought that I, that they got a little bit better, um, I cooperations when you had, uh, when you had a mix of both, but I do agree that increasing the, uh, increasing the civilian, I, I, I investigated is a, uh, an idea.
Sorry, Reverend Walden. So did that mean that you didn't, you don't agree in for fully civilianizing the investigatory arm? Like you, or I just, I wasn't quite clear what your position was on that.
Okay, I think my position was the latter one, uh, the one that was going to gradually to increase the amount of, uh, but you know, I'm not, I'm willing to vote the other way, but I'm just willing, I, I'm still thinking about it. I like Esther's point. I like what you talked about, what's happening in Chicago. So I'm thinking about it. So I, you could go on to the next one and don't worry about me. Let me, I'm just thinking about it. So you could go into the next one.
And let's go to Suzette, uh, and then I think Erin and Esther also maybe have secondary follow-up comments.
Hey, Laron, just so you know, I can't raise my hand. Um, it's not showing up for me, but I'll go after everybody else. But this is Alina. I eventually want to ask a question.
Actually, um, I'm gonna, I would like for Alina to go first since we haven't heard, um, and then Suzette and then Erin and then Esther. So let's go in that order.
Awesome, Laron. Yeah, I just had a question. Um, and maybe Shailene, you can speak to this a little bit. You know, the, there's differences of like difference, different information that's coming out around, you know, fully civilianized versus not civilianized. Does that mean that OPA would have less access to the police department? Um, I think, I, I, I think that is what I was understanding. Director Meyerberg kind of speaking to so, and then how does this connect to like statewide legislation? So I, I'm just curious if you could speak to that. And then if we did have a fully civilianized OPA would, if I'm understanding you correctly, would, would they have investigatory powers then that are not limited if it led to termination? Sorry, there's a lot there.
A few things here, and then I also, um, we do have Officer Mullins, he might go speak to some of this. So a couple of things. So as far as state law is concerned, currently, I think some of you know, there is a community board oversight bill that has made it to the House floor. And it's getting a little bit further than I think OIR we initially thought it was. So we're keeping a close eye on that. So everyone for SLA, you know, Mia is keeping track of that. That particular bill states that it would pull investigatory by like OPA out of SPD. So that is where they get a lot of those, um, the access is because they're housed within SPD and right now there's nothing written and they would have to have within city law like access, complete access to the department they are pulled out. So there's that within city law that could restrict that. As far as officer access or investigator access, what is complimentary as what people have advocated for, what I've heard in school of thought is that when you have police officers who invest investigators, one, they have that full investigatory power that civilian investigators currently do not have within the contracts, but two, they already have those built-in relationships with the department and what people see as an ability to have a little bit more transparency with their counterparts. Whether or not that is true, I think you could see that. So that's one of the pieces that is the school of thought. Um, Meyerberg may be speaking to that. So here's the pieces that I would say depending which way you want to go. If we were to fully civilianize the Office of Police Accountability, you could make it clear that civilian investigators would have to be given full investigatory powers, but it would be pretty obvious because if you didn't have sworn personnel on staff, you would have to do that. You'd have to make that much more clear if you just remove the limits of civilianization or the OPA. If you wanted those investigators to have those powers, because they do not. So if you were to fully civilianize or if you to restrict, we'd still have to add language that would say that yes, they can fully investigate, um, such as sworn personnel can at this time. Alina, I hope I answered all of the questions or comments you threw my way. Um, and we can continue to talk on this, but that's what's currently running. So state law, I'd have to double check. I don't think there's anything currently right now, except for the things that are on the House floor that have yet to pass. So that could come to pass as far as pulling OPA out of SPD and that might restrict their access. But that hasn't happened yet, um, as far as state law is concerned.
Yeah, I just wanted to make, yeah, no, thank you for explaining that. I just wanted to make sure if we were going to vote on one or the other, how those two things are connected, like to make sure that, gosh, is this gonna affect something? I don't know. Is it gonna have a negative consequence? Is it gonna have a positive consequence? Will they still have access to SPD the same way? Do civilians have the same amount of power? So, yeah, that was, that was.
Alright, Suzette?
Oh, you covered it. I was talking about the, I was gonna talk, touch on, um, like when the sergeant, like when you have the sergeant investigators, how they have more access than what the civilians do, but you covered it already.
Right, uh, and I know I said Erin and then Esther, but I, I think maybe Officer Mullins may have a statement if.
Yeah.
I want to make a.
If you could hear me, I so, um, my question has been in the past, um, when you have civilian investigators, are they going to go through the police academy? Are they going to be trained, uh, in law enforcement? Because, uh, and, and are they going to be attorneys? Um, because what are the qualifications for people working and investigating officers in a, a police situation? How familiar will they be with all of the things that officers do? All of the tactics that officers are trained to do. You'd have to send a civilian through a, a police academy to be able to, to be able to be familiar with all the things that uh, police officers would be judged on or, or even the advantage of knowing uh, that if an officer did something wrong, uh, that you had knowledge about what, what, what he did wrong or why he did wrong. Or even the mentality of an officer in a situation like that. When you remove officers from the investigation, what are you taking away from yourself? Uh, in terms of, uh, having an advantage of being able to know, uh, what an officer, uh, what an officer goes through, what an officer is thinking at, at, at the time of, uh, the, uh, the, the problem that we might have with an officer at that time.
And I think you raised really good points on, and you know, as with any new position or new job or new organization, there would have to be a really thoughtful approach into thinking about what qualifications and what trainings are most appropriate. And that seems a little bit further downstream than where we are now. But I think making sure that we are thoughtful, um, and you know, if we move towards a fully civilianized, uh, if we actually can make that happen, then I think it's time to really parse through the questions about what is the appropriate training, you know, what, what's the training that people need to, to have around constitutional use of force? Um, do they actually need to be trained as officers? Is that helpful or would that actually be detrimental? Those are, I think, conversations that we can begin to think about now. So I greatly appreciate that, but I, it feels a little more detailed than where we are right now, which is like the sort of attempt to sort of change the win which OP is currently structured. But I, but I think your point is really helpful. Um, so we have Erin next, Esther, and then I think Jesse.
Given the, the twenty seventeen accountability ordinance, uh, was more in line with remove limits on civilianization, allowing the OPA director to determine the correct mix. I, and given that there is a state process that could potentially supersede that, my question and comment is whether, um, whether the current city law allows for full, uh, civilianization and I'm thinking that it doesn't because it, I think the accountability ordinance supersedes any previous rules in that regard. And so I think my, my instinct is to go with the remove limits, understanding that the state process could come in and supersede all of that so that we wouldn't have to go back in to the accountability ordinance and make edits at this time.
Erin, a quick question. Would you also, if you wanted to remove limits, would you also want to change the language that would allow those civilian investigators to have full investigatory power?
I believe that civilian investigators that, uh, according to the twenty seventeen accountability ordinance should have the same investigative powers as their sworn, you know, colleagues.
Okay, I just want to put that on table as an option for everyone as they're listening, that what Erin is saying is select the first part, but then also make sure we add the piece, not just in the background, but in the recommendation to make sure civilians have, investigators have the same powers as their sworn counterparts.
I do want to, sorry, raise just a quick question to Erin, which is that, um, you point to the accountability ordinance as allowing the director to make the decision, but I recommend is us recommend a, recommending fully civilianizing? I, I'm not sure that it's runs counter to the law, uh, if it's a recommendation that that change be made, right? Because it's not, we're, we're not requiring it. It's just that that would be our ideal. So just want to flag that in case that changes any of your analysis.
No, and I, I, I get that. I think that, um, if that were the decision based on, and I think that the piece that that Shailene is adding now could have a serious impact. If, you know, civilian investigators have the same investigative powers, then there is a, you know, a stronger benefit to fully civilianizing. And I, I want to make sure that, um, that our partner, Office of Police Accountability has the latitude and ability to make their staff decisions to the best of what they think will get the appropriate job done. So I, I'm, you know, fully understanding that state law could come in with a completely different process.
Alright, Esther?
Um, so I, I think Alina's point is well made, and I think that we do need to make a statement about sphere of influence or authority. And I do think since we have alleged committee that we could also make the same recommendation at the state level. Right? I mean, there's a lot of change happening there as well. So we don't have to just limit our efforts to recommendations here. And I think that's all I have to say. I also have to let folks know I have to jump off in about four minutes.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Suzette, do you, is it, do you have a new comment or?
Right, so, um, in some ways you would have to have a little bit more clear parameters in regards to what you're asking for because at the table, you have to, you have to explain what the intent of the language is. So on this one, I would need to, I would need to know a little bit more in regards to which way we're going and, and what is the true intent of what we're saying.
Uh, and just for clarification, well, you know, we'll have to go back and vote on these. So we'll be making a determination on one or the other. Will that be sufficient or do you need more, um, information from us as you move forward with your role at the table?
Once we make the, I think that once that we make the, we do the vote on it, um, it will give me a little bit more clarity because right now it's one or, and so as long as we are picking one and moving down that route and then if at that time I have any more questions, then I can ask that.
Great. Alright, Jesse?
Just some information if it's helpful to, um, the accountability ordinance, um, which if we approve number one, um, would help with kind of spells out a lot of this stuff, um, specifically around even like training, talking about the types of training that they'd have to have, um, as well as, uh, like giving them equal authority to investigate any types of misconduct. And I believe that, um, it also says that if the OPA director decided to, he could completely civilianize um, on his own already. So, um, just flagging that there's a little bit more specificity, if that's helpful in the accountability ordinance, and I can share the documents that we have on that.
Thanks, Jesse. Well, Ron, if I may add one more piece, just, and it's not necessarily listed out here. For those of you that were not, were unable to make the town hall, I just want to talk about that just for a quick second. So a lot of the conversations that were being had from community is the fear, um, the very real fear that police officers should not be able to investigate and police themselves. And so when you have primarily a majority, um, your investigators are majority sworn personnel, this makes the community very nervous that they do not feel that accountability is truly being implemented, um, that misconduct is being addressed. And so that is another large piece of conversation that we repeatedly and constantly hear from our, from our community. So I just want to put that out there on, on, yes, it's come from the accountability ordinance. Yes, we talked about this two thousand and nineteen, but this was a huge discussion we had the other night at the town hall.
May I say something, please, Officer Mullins?
Absolutely, thank you.
Um, be careful what you ask for. And I know it, 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 it seems like to you guys that all, a total civilian all a total civilian O P A sounds wonderful. It sounds like uh S P D's not not hiding anything. We got civilians uh making judgments on officers and this, that, and the other. You need someone up there who is a police officer in all the situations that you are making decisions on, making judgments, trying to trying to figure out what exactly happened in the incident or the complaint and try to under trying to understand all the nuances of that. You're going to need law enforcement people up there. Okay, so that officers don't come up there and go, this is a civilian. I I'm just gonna, I'm gonna be able to tell them anything. Or I'm going to be able to get away with this because of the nuance of that. You need to cover yourself totally, not just through civilians, but through officers who were who who are up there to do exactly that, and that is to investigate officers. I'm just saying, I'm just putting that out there for a a a different train of thought. You have yourself covered totally if you have civilians and officers. Just think about that, please.
Great, thank you. And then um Reverend Williams?
Yeah, uh just in light of what Officer Mullins has stated, would it be possible uh to have the the turn the tables around on that and have two police officers and the rest uh civilians? So to just to turn the tables right, the way it stands right now is two two civilian investigators. So let's say, so that make that two police officer investigators and the rest uh on on that uh as civilians.
And I think that would probably fall under the first prong, which is remove the limitations of the on civilianization for O P A and an example could potentially be flipping that. Um so it sounds like you probably might be more leaning towards prong one. Um I do want to say we likely will have to go through and do a vote. And so um when we come to vote on this issue, we'll have to vote on which of these two the C P C wants to support. Uh so this conversation and dialogue is super helpful, and we're ultimately, we're going to have to come back when we vote and make a choice on that after we've had a little bit of time to think as we vote through the other seven. Brandy, did you have a comment?
No, I just really wanted to kind of piggyback honestly what Reverend Williams and Officer Mullins have both said. I'm wondering, you know, the prevailing thing that keeps coming up is there is a lack of trust, right? From community to S P D, and on some level, it sounds like from S P D to community. You know, based on what I do know and what I do understand of the ordinance and the fully civilianized portion, I really think we should consider uh what Officer Mullins is saying and have um a more in-depth conversation about the possibility of uh changing the limitations. That's the only thing I wanted to add.
Okay, so it sounds like you're leaning towards option one where we're more sort of making a statement that we want to change how civilianized O P A is, but not necessarily taking the stand for full civilianization. Is that right?
Right.
Okay. Um all right, any other comments or questions on this one or um? I know it's a difficult one. Uh I do want to give my two cents. I lean towards fully civilianizing O P A. Uh I think it's consistent with a lot of what we've heard community say, and I and I think it's been successful in other jurisdictions. Just so people know where I'm where I'm standing on that. But we can come back to that when we have our vote. So if there's no other comments on this one, can we move to nine? Sharon?
Yeah, sorry, I was struggling with my share screen and mute button. Okay, so number nine. When the department needs to lay off officers, it should be allowed to conduct the process in a safe and effective manner, such as out-of-order layoffs. This has come from conversation actually within C P C commissioners and C P C staff, which is why it just says C P C. So this is really speaking to out-of-order layoffs, which was the, you know, the the genesis of this recommendation was out-of-order layoffs. But wanted to make sure that, um thank you to Erin and Laron and and some of the language for this recommendation, to make sure it's also just broad enough that the department could also think about other ways in which they lay off officers if that needs to be done. And so that's this recommendation. It's primarily for out-of-order, but let's look at it broad so they can do other uh things that they deem necessary as a department.
Suzette?
I can already tell you from a union perspective, this is, this will be a hard no on their on S P O G's part. And also, the worries from a union perspective is if an organization cannot hire correctly, if they cannot promote correctly, then what makes you think that they're going to lay off correctly? You're just, now you have just given them the authority for the last thing that the really what most unions have, which is the ability to, this specific provision is a provision that an employer cannot manipulate. But if you get rid of that, then they have the ability to manipulate it and they'll be able to, now you just gave them full authority to get rid of whoever you want to. And it basically, it's almost as if they're almost like at-will employees. So I want people to really understand that as we're going through the these recommendations.
Erin?
That really resonates with me and also resonates with conversations that I had with other people in the in the labor, general labor, not specifically related to S P O G, that this particular item is very concerning for a possible precedent in other labor situations and really could potentially undermine, you know, the decades of work that have been done in other labor situations.
May I have a couple of background comments here?
Absolutely, thank you.
So um definitely hear what everyone's saying. Thank you, Suzette, for that um information. So I think similar to what Laron was speaking of in the earlier comment of um the recommendation that let me scroll up as I think this is oh precedence of local law or how it looked like to fully civilianize. Another piece, this is the recommendation that if they were to take this, this is another opportunity for later on down the road for us to discuss the ways in which an out-of-order layoff, for example, could happen. So we talk about here about disciplinary records, and we'd have to keep in mind that an officer that had been on the force for twenty years is going to have a longer disciplinary record or quote unquote demerits than an officer who's been on the force for two years. So to take that into account on like their tenure, right? That is something that we can absolutely one hundred percent look at later if this was to go through on how to do that in an equitable manner that doesn't undermine the power of a union in protecting their their workforce. So there's that, and we want to protect a workforce. That's why we have unions. On the other hand as well, just to offer this like food for thought in the community, the conversation that's being had is essentially, there are people that absolutely want officers to be at-will, to be exempt, like like my position is exempt. I'm an at-will employee. And they feel that this is the hardest thing is to fire an officer, especially after misconduct happens. But here with layoffs, this speaks to the process of now we're cutting, we're talking about defunding, which officers are then we laying off if people that were hired under the new parameters of recruitment, who they're recruiting, those would be cut first. And so there's a huge conversation about layoffs and and fire in the same bucket on officers are terminated, officers that are laid off, and what the community holistically is asking for. And even if this is a struggle, uh I I'm not sure. Even if we want to keep this here because this is the voice of the community, I think it's possible we could revise the language. But I just wanted to offer these these items of food for thought um and just kind of where this came from and and what was the spirit within these conversations that we had in the town hall, especially in on staff and in the commission.
Can I just have a comment? Um, you know, people have worked long and hard to not be at-will uh employees. I mean, that's why we have unions, I mean, across the country. I mean, you know, Florida is a right work state means that you have a right to not have a job. So I I I think that we have to kind of look at the holistic piece of all of this because a lot of the people, uh a lot of times we're saying things, we don't know the ramification of it. I I mean, that what that means, this whole city, the whole city of Seattle, all the employees, will would this open the door for uh for the people who, uh you know, work for parks and other 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 agency? I mean, the city has fourteen thousand employees. I mean, thirteen thousand, and then over summer, I think it's fourteen thousand. Did how does this will impact the other four, the thirteen thousand permanent employees of the city? Uh when this time, when their contracts are up, because every every department in the city of Seattle has another kind of union that represents them. I whether they, you know, I mean, I I can't name them all, and that's not my job. But I mean, that would open the door because once you open the door, I I and that means that the people who I, you know, who are I who are working on the uh contracts will have the the same possibility that this could happen to them. And I think that that's would be one thing that we have to think about. We need to think about the other thirteen hundred thirteen thousand employees that also work for the city could have a great impact on.
Great, thank you. Suzette, did you have a second follow-up comment or?
No, I want to say that uh what Reverend Walden said is absolutely correct because um these are proposals, these are types of proposals that are being already being asked at the table where unions have been having a hard stance, and that is no.
Okay, thank you. Jessie?
Good question. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Erin.
Oh, it's Alina.
I'm sorry.
No worries. Um I I was scared, you know, I've heard some conversation too about arguing arguments for S P O G not being technically a union but being a guild. Again, I I'm I'm not a labor person, so I'm really looking for education around this, if that is a loophole. Because, you know, obviously grocery store workers that are organizing are different than people who have the authority to use deadly force. And so I just wanted to know if there's any insight on that. Because yes, we don't want to create, you know, negative ramifications for, you know, labor movements in general. But I think there's like this intersection of like historic case law, whether the guild can be considered a union or a guild, like what the difference is there? So I think I'm just looking for some insight for folks that might have know.
Hello, Officer Mullins. Can I say something?
Absolutely, Officer Mullins.
Okay, um we we the guild is uh another word for a union, and I know there are lawyers sitting around here listening to me, probably plugging their ears right now. But um police officers don't like the word union. That's why we use guild instead of union. We are a labor union. We are labor. This is the reason why uh uh the president of the Guild Officer or Officer Stuckey, former uh president uh joined the M L King Labor Union as a whole because uh the labor unions in this city uh recognized and considered us a labor union. So we are a union, just just to put that out there.
Okay, um do are there any other commissioners who have a comment or question before this point? Okay, Jessie?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, um because like just hearing everything and also piggybacking a little bit off of Shaleen's comments, would it make sense or be any better um to say um that we agree with like out-of-order like or layoffs based off of things like comparable disciplinary records? And make sure that that's um clearer, so it's not more of like a ambiguous statement, but it's specific to disciplinary records since police do have like unparalleled authority to take liberty in life. So just specifically making it about disciplinary records or is that the same concern?
It would still be the same concern because of the fact that those records can also be manipulated. And so, you know, it's like in the history of S P D, have more people of color like the BIPOC officers been disciplined more so than Caucasian officers? You know, you have to look at all the the historical factors when we're when we're talking about this as well. Because what are those records really going to have in there? Uh what who are who's doing the reporting on all this, you know? So I mean, that has its own issues as well.
All right, Reverend Williams?
Yeah, I just have a just uh I need someone to clarify for me the relationship between the police guild and the process of arbitration. You know, in many cases I've seen over the years, there has been a police guild has been a force to reckon with in pretty much overturning some of the decisions that maybe the police chief has made. And the arbitration process, I just need someone to clarify for me how that works. I don't know if Suzette or Officer Mullins or one of our lawyers can explain that to me.
So when a when a case go, you know, when a grievance is filed, it goes through multiple steps of a of the process, and it's outlined by the contract. Once it gets to arbitration, an arbitrator is picked between the union and the generally picked between the union and the employer. And then um the case is heard. It's almost, it's kind of um so the the media, whoever the arbitrator is in that case, will look at all merits of the case and then rule on it. Now, there have been, there have been times in the past where a decision that was made at the arbitration level was then appealed as well and then went um went higher than just the arbitration. Though it doesn't happen all the time, but there have been times and from my understanding, there was a case not so long ago that where um they appealed it and then it the ruling was overturned, um I believe from the city side.
Okay, okay, we are, um I I know a number of our commissioners have a hard stop at ten thirty. So I think we should move towards um voting on on recommendations. I also want to raise the fact that some of these recommendations may result in continued conversation for the C P C and that we have the opportunity, I believe, uh to submit further recommendations if there are certain ones that we're not able to come to resolution on today or after further conversation or input, we might uh as a commission have a different perspective on. Um so let's go through each of the recommendations. We'll have to have um someone move and second for a vote on each of the recommendations. Um and then we'll take a a vote accordingly. I probably should have gotten a pen and paper out before now.
I have a pen and paper all set up.
Great, thank you.
But can I also make a point? We do need to make a motion for each one, but when we get to like number seven, which has two choices, someone can make a motion for either one, and we will vote on that. And then if somebody else wants to make a motion for the other one, so we don't, we can't do a split vote, we need to have a motion for each one. That's.
Great, um so our first recommendation uh would be to fully implement the reforms in the accountability law. Um does anyone move for the C P C to put forward this recommendation?
I make a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead, Harriet. I'll second your motion.
Well, yeah, I I like to make a motion that 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 recommendation as read, I I I we vote on I as our one of our recommendations here, first one.
And I believe Joseph could do that, so we can move forward with the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion passes. Uh the second recommendation uh is the Labor Relations Policy Committee must make public the city's bargaining priorities. Uh is there a motion for the C P C to put forward this recommendation? Uh, is there a motion for the CPC to put forward this recommendation?
I'll move to, uh, to support recommendation number two.
Thank you. Okay, Prachi seconded. Uh, so let's move forward with the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstained.
Okay, we have one abstention. Um, and, uh, it passes. Um, okay, let's move forward with the third recommendation. The city should publicly identify who's at the negotiating table for the CBAs. Uh, who those parties represent and their roles in the negotiating process. Um, is there a motion for the CPC to put forward this recommendation?
Is that the one that Suzette said that sometimes they don't know until the, uh, that it changes and they might not know until it's committed to happen. I, so is that the same one that we had that discussion on?
It is. That's the same one where we recognize that there will be some sort of static members of the, of the team and then some people who might roll on or off. And so the, uh, communication might need to be iterative or one that's, um, updated on a somewhat regular basis.
Hi, LaRan, apologies. Um, also the team did make changes to this recommendation. Do you want to see that final product or do you want to vote as is?
Uh, let's see the final product.
Okay, uh, Nia, go ahead and I will unshare and then share your screen.
Okay, uh, so just for clarification, Shailene, uh, we're looking at Nia's.
Yeah, she's looking at Nia's screen. So Nia and Luisa, as you can see in the background, we're making changes. So number three now reads the city should be more proactive in publicly identifying who is at the negotiating table for the CBAs. It was the proactive piece. Um, to identify just the practice that Esther was talking and speaking to earlier.
Okay, great. Um, so let's start, uh, the vote on this again with the, uh, newly edited language. Uh, the city, city should be more proactive in publicly identifying who is at the negotiating table for the CBAs and whose parties they represent and their role in negotiating, in the negotiating process. Is there a motion for the CPC to put forward this recommendation as written?
This is Erin. I make a motion to put forth this recommendation.
Excellent. Is there a second?
This is Prachi.
Perfect. Um, great. So let's move forward with the vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes. This recommendation will be put forward. Uh, recommendation number four, the city should announce and release regular updates on the process of the collective bargaining negotiations. Uh, is there a motion for the CPC to put forward this recommendation?
This is Erin. I'll step away from the chair to move, move that the city should announce and release regular updates on the processes of CBAs. They know.
Great. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Reverend Williams. Um, all right, uh, let's move forward with the vote. All in favor, uh, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, uh, the motion passes. We will put forward this recommendation. Um, Shailene, I, their recommendation number five is highlighted. I cannot read the comments. I'm unclear whether or not um, you made any revisions to.
Yeah, there, there, no. So what you're seeing on the side, I'm catching what's on her screen. What I have noted, what you're noting was Nia and Luisa on the side were making comments um, to what revise in lifetime. So that's just highlighted, but there's nothing, this is as it stands. I'm sorry, I could have said that.
That's okay. I just want to make sure that we're actually voting on the exact language.
Yes, I apologize. That's my very long answer. Yes, that is correct.
Okay, recommendation number five, um, the city must commit to releasing all information that can be made public on the negotiation process at the conclusion of the process, but prior to city council approval. Uh, is there a motion for the CPC to put forward this recommendation? Any commissioners interested in the CPC putting forward this recommendation?
This is Reverend, we make a motion to put forward their recommendation.
Excellent. Is there a second?
Douglas, I'll second.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's move forward with the vote. Uh, commissioners, all in favor of putting forward recommendation number five, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes. Moving on to recommendation number six. The city should publicly state, explain and justify to the community what it has uh, given up and gained in the negotiation process. Uh, is there a motion to move forward with this recommendation?
I'll move to move forward with.
Okay, I believe I heard Douglas move for it. Alena, was that you seconding?
Yes.
Okay. Um, uh, so let's move forward with the vote on recommendation number six. Uh, commissioners in favor and, uh, the CPC putting forward this recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
On this one, I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
I'm also going to abstain.
Okay. Um, so the motion still passes. Great. Um, so we will move forward. That will, recommendation will be put forward. Uh, moving forward with recommendation number seven. Remove clauses from the contracts that allow CBAs to take precedence over local law, including the accountability ordinance. Uh, is there a motion for the CPC to put forward this recommendation?
I make a motion, I should like to go forward.
Great, excellent. Thank you, Reverend Walden. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Reverend Williams. Okay, let's move forward with the vote. Uh, commissioners, all in favor of putting forward recommendation number seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, one, one in opposition. Uh, any abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay.
Suzette, I abstain as well.
Okay, I believe the motion still passes. Erin, are you saying something? I can't tell.
I have to count real quickly, so.
I think we have the numbers working.
I have to. So if we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Yes, it still passes.
Okay. Uh, great. Moving on to recommendation number eight. Which is to remove limitations on, uh, civilianization of the Office of Police Accountability and ensure that civilian investigators have the same investigatory powers as their sworn counterparts or fully civilianize the investigatory arm within the Office of Police Accountability or neither. Um, so is there, um, a commissioner who, uh, wants to move on either of the two variants that are currently uh, put forward as recommendation number eight?
This is Suzette. I'll move on the first one.
To remove limitations on civilianization of the Office of Police Accountability and ensure that civilian investigators have the same investigatory powers as their sworn counterparts?
Yes.
Correct?
I'll second that.
Reverend Walden seconds. Okay. Uh, let's take a vote. Um, all commissioners in favor, say aye.
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 Actually, so we might individualize vote on this because, um, the debate on this particular issue was extensive. So Erin, do you mind running through the roll and just getting everyone's vote?
Okay, so for, we're voting on the first option and number eight, Reverend Williams.
Aye.
Uh, LaRan?
Aye.
Suzette?
Aye.
Douglas?
Aye.
Prachi?
Aye.
Erin, aye. Reverend Walden?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes. Um.
Reverend, I, to me, Officer Mullins?
No.
Okay, Alina?
Yes.
Uh, and that is it. So that does pass.
Okay, great. Uh, moving to recommendation number nine, uh, when the department needs to lay off officers, it should be allowed to conduct the process in a safe and effective manner such as out of order layoffs. Uh, this too was, uh, a matter where there was substantial debate, so we, uh, should probably take an individual role on this one.
We need a motion first.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that one. Uh, is there anyone who moves, uh, for this, uh, recommendation to be put forward by the CPC? Is there any commissioner that believes that number nine should, recommendation number nine should be put forward? Supporting out of order layoffs. Okay, I'm going to take that silence to mean, uh, that the CPC does not support putting forward recommendation number nine. Um, and I will note that it was a, is there someone?
This is Alina. I'll, I'll make a motion to move that forward, especially if it's, this is a recommendation and we can have further discussion onward, but I, you know, I think this is something that community wants us to advocate for.
Is there a second? I'll step away from the chair and second. Uh, we should take a roll vote on this one. Um, Erin?
Uh, Reverend Williams?
Uh, abstain.
Uh, LaRan?
Yes.
Suzette?
No.
Douglas?
Abstain.
Prachi?
Yes.
Erin is a no. Uh, Reverend Walden?
No.
Joseph?
Yes.
Officer Mullins?
No.
Alina?
Yes.
And so let me count. One, two, three, four, one, two. So we are split with three, four and three against with two abstent, I mean, four, four, four against with two abstentions. So the motion does not pass.
Okay, uh, I will say that we, uh, this particular recommendation and, uh, you know, created a lot of conversation and discussion and is a topic that we as a commission should continue to discuss and come back to and gain more information about. Um, especially because we have a split on this, so, uh, we will not put it forward, but we will continue to discuss as a commission. Uh, so.
Oh, sorry, LaRan. I was just going to say, I think it would be great to have some kind of communication as to why we voted the way that we did, so when community asks that we have an answer, or that way we're not caught off guard.
Okay, thank you for that. We will, um, work on something and try to, uh, come up with the a very inclusive way of talking about, um, the issues that were raised around this issue higher commissioners on both sides.
Um, and I just want to let everybody know, I really have to jump off because I have to get to bargaining.
Great, thank you so much, Suzette.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, so we are.
Thank you, Suzette.
Go ahead, Reverend Walden. I think you were just thanking Suzette, maybe. My internet's not particularly great today, so sorry about that. Uh, so it looks like we are moving forward with eight recommendations. Um, and
Yes, one through eight.
One through eight, yep. And staff will finalize, uh, the document and we will, um, move forward with that. I believe we are at the end of our, uh, agenda for our special meeting. I want to thank everyone. I know we've had a lot of special meetings recently. Uh, and a lot of very significant substantive votes on matters and the staff has done an incredible job on their work and the commissioners have also done an incredible job being engaged and being willing to have difficult conversations around very complex issues. Um, so I thank you all and we will see you next week, uh, unless someone has anything else they want to say. Uh, Brandy or Erin, and I think Ron might have raised his hand for a second.
I think Ron has been trying to say something for quite some time. I just wanted to thank everybody for their attendance and participation today and we will draft up something explaining, um, the reason for our votes and the recommendations that were made and get that out.
Thank you, everyone, for attending. I think we really, this was a very productive and, you know, conversation and I'm really pleased with the way that we went about it. So thank you.
Right. Uh, Ron, do you have any statements?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
When will the finalization of these recommendations, uh, with any comments, uh, be available?
Before the end of the week, most likely.
And they'll be available on the website or will they be distributed, uh, in addition to the?
Um, Ron, we can actually do both, but it'll definitely be up on the website.
Hey, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, everyone. Uh, enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.